The weather's really nice in DC today.
Who's?
Um, this is, his council, his mayor and lobbyist came back today. He'll say, he'll say, I'm not gonna be here next week, I mean, next meeting.
Next council meeting?
Um, and he said, the, um, sound man said that the reason the mics were, um, were squeaking was because it's facing up.
Yeah, I have my facing up. Can I take a quick look at that? Thank you. Okay. Great.
Nice tie-up.
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk? Hey Laura?
Sorry. Hi Kelly, hello.
All right.
Sorry about that.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes sir, thank you. Five thirty-six, Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe.
Present.
Mister Mayor, uh, Councilmember Garcia is excused absent. And Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Mister Mayor, you have a quorum this evening?
Excellent. All right, the agenda says that the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration was for Mayor Pro Tem, but that was because we had the special meeting. I'm gonna go ahead, we'll go ahead and have me do it this meeting and then you'll be two meetings then.
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you could and are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So, in, in preparing for the meeting tonight, um, I found a, uh, a poem that had been put together that I think describes the city really well. And with everything that's been going on, uh, between the wind, the fires and the floods, it was something that kind of, kind of reminded me what makes this such a great community to live in. So, it says, "We long for a city where people focus more on what we've accomplished with pride and amazement, and focus less on what remains to be done with frustration and criticism. Where people come together to meet real challenges with resolve and good humor, and a willingness to work collaboratively. Where finding reasonable, finding a reasonable compromise is considered a win. Where we can disagree without being disagreeable, and people are civil, respectful, and supportive, even in the face of disagreement. Where broad generalities and stereotypes are not raised over differences of opinion. Where there, where there is an appetite for increased listening to others, and where opinions are allowed to evolve and change. Where we worry more about the common good than a single agenda. We long for a city where residents take the time to go past the headlines, learn about the issues, and ask questions. Where civility and common courtesy prevail, and dialogue builds, it builds us up without breaking us down." I think that that's one of the things to me that, that really emblem, that's really about this, this city and about the community that we have. Um, with that, um, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is approval of meeting min, of the meeting agenda. Are there any edits to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. All right, uh, we did not have a closed session, so, uh, or do we, did, we didn't have a closed session since our last meeting, did we?
There, there was only one item we didn't report on because, uh, we went back into closed session.
Oh, that's right.
At the end of the meeting. So, items one and two have already been reported on. Item three, public employee performance evaluation, title, City Attorney. The city council met in closed session to discuss this item and no reportable action was taken there.
Thank you. Let me go see. Okay. Um, so then next is approval for reading resolutions and ordinances by title only. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Continuing on, um, the approval of minutes for January twenty-fifth. Um, does anybody have any changes for the, the minutes? Or actually, Madam Clerk, did you receive any changes for items in the minutes?
Thank you, uh, Mister Mayor, we, the city clerk's office received one email from Mayor Pro Tem Lowe requesting corrections to typographical errors and grammatical errors on the minutes, and those corrections have been made. And, and the draft for signature today reflects those corrections.
Excellent. Any other edits to the minutes? And, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Moved to approve the minutes as amended?
Excellent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so those, just to be clear, those are the minutes from February twenty-fifth. Um, now we need to move on to the minutes for March fourth, which were, we, those were in the council packet, were they not? Or were they not included? They were.
They were included, yes.
And any comments on the minutes for, from the March fourth meeting?
There were no, uh, comments for corrections to those minutes.
All right. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I actually have to abstain, so.
Excellent, okay. Great. Um, then we'll move on to Mayor and City Council reports, who would like to go first?
I can go first because I have no report.
Okay.
All right. How about?
I do have a report. Last Tuesday, actually, um, I could have reported during our special meeting, but didn't want to slow things down. I had just come out of the latest ad hoc library project committee meeting, and, um, got some, uh, an update on the, on the delay that we're facing. I had reported last month that the delay was thirty days, and apparently that was about ten dol, ten days too short. It was actually forty as of last time I reported. Um, good news is, the commit, the, uh, project manager from Vertex has assured us that they are implementing a variety of uh, construction tactics to get caught up, and, and in fact, as of today, they're now thirty-eight days behind. Their projection is they will easily make it by the end of the January two thousand twenty-six deadline. Um, we're assured by them and by the, uh, contractor and, as well by our public works director, so I just wanted to update you on that. Last Thursday, I went to the planning commission meeting, um, it was a three-hour meeting. The first part was deliberation, deliberation over a variance of a proposed project at two thirty-eight Auburn Avenue. Actually, a variance and a discretionary demolition permit. After lengthy discussion, um, public comment deliberation, the planning commission approved both. And more pertinent, I suppose, to the larger city interest. The rest of the meeting was devoted to a discussion of numerous staff recommendations to help expedite reconstruction, excuse me, of homes lost in the fire. The planning commission deliberated all the proposals at length. These, these proposals had come from staff, and there were quite a number of them, and they were very innovative. The planning commission deliberated all those proposals at length, and they will make fi, final decisions on them and what to send to us on their upcoming meeting on March twentieth, so if you'd like to have some input on that, uh, plan on attending the planning commission Thursday, March twentieth. Uh, they did agree in principle, uh, that measures designed to speed up the process of rebuilding are most worthy of consideration, even if some sort of city subsidy is needed, though there was not a formal vote taken. Mister Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Lowe?
Uh, mine's very short, I just had one activity. On, uh, February twenty-seventh, I went to Sierra Madre Elementary School with, um, Luna Peak Foundation, who writes a lot of books for children on how to cope with different things like cancer, and their newest book is called I Survived the Wildfires of two thousand twenty-five. I don't know if you can see this. So, if anyone's interested in these great little coloring books and books, it says like, color your feelings, and, uh, what made you feel safe that night, and other questions, they're like, what questions do you have? So it's a little workbook for kids, um, and if you'd like a copy, contact me and I will get you one.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, I have a number of items. Uh, on February twenty-sixth, I attended the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. Um, two items came out of that. The first thing, uh, is that, uh, anyone that was impacted by the fires will have their service fee removed. So all parcels that have, were impacted by the fire will not receive service charges from the sanitation district, which was, which is good news. Uh, second, they said that, um, they've got a goal to convert all of their fleet to electric vehicles, um, by twenty thirty-five. So a hundred percent of their fleet vehicles by, uh, twenty thirty-five, and they've already converted twenty percent of them. Uh, also, on February twenty-sixth, I attended the Natural Resources Commission. Uh, one of the, uh, key things from that meeting was the Planning for Earth Day, uh, which will be, uh, the same day as the Asteria Festival. It'll be from ten to two on April twelfth. Uh, and, uh, the staff has already sent out invitations to a number of organizations, so it sounds like we'll have a good, uh, group that is attending that. Um, on February twenty-seventh, the Ad Hoc Revenue Committee met, uh, and, um, and the Ad Hoc Revenue Committee is, is really trying to, it, it is, as it states, a way to find additional, uh, revenue for the city. And that committee, after a careful and thorough review of fifteen applicants, uh, with diverse background backgrounds, a five-member committee has been selected to lead the effort. While there is a five-member committee, uh, the, the committee asked, and the city has asked, that the remaining ten candidates, uh, continue to support, uh, the, the overall committee, uh, because there's a lot of things to do to help implement the, uh, what we're gonna need to do to, to look for revenue. Uh, and there's gonna be lots of different work and subcommittees, I imagine, that will be developed from that. So that's, uh, I really thank everybody that applied and everybody that was engaged in that. The collaborative approach that we're proceeding, pursuing is gonna give us a broad range of perspective and expertise to try to find those additional revenues to close the, the future revenue hole, uh, revenue holes that we've got. And I'd like to congratulate the new members of the Revenue Enhancement Committee. Michael O'Mario, James Kelly, Russell Mix, Mike Comer, and Tom Dennison. Um, we did report out here, we had the special meeting on March fourth. Uh, and then the last thing on March sixth was the Clean Power Alliance, and some exciting news coming out of that. Um, two of the Clean Power Alliance's largest and long-awaited solar plus storage, uh, projects came in law, came online. It's the Rexford and Desert Court Site. Um, the Rexford is a three hundred megawatt solar plus two hundred and forty megawatt battery storage project located in Tulare County. Four hundred construction jobs were created in building the project. Um, the Desert Court Site wa, is a three hundred megawatt plus a hundred and fifty mega, uh, sorry, three hundred megawatt, uh, solar plus a hundred and fifty megawatt battery storage located, located outside of Blythe in Riverside County. And four hundred and fifty construction jobs were created in the building of that, uh, project. Together, these two projects provide enough energy for two hundred and seventy thousand homes, uh, in Southern California on an annual basis. Uh, additional updates that we've got, uh, I'll, I'll remind everyone that the YWCA continues to host the Senior Lunch and Food Program, Monday through Thursday at the Hart Park Senior Center, starting at eleven thirty AM. For more information, call six two six three five 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 two seven eight. Nominations for the Older American of the Year are being accepted until tomorrow, March twelfth. The nomination forms are available at the Senior Hart Park House in Memorial Park. Please pick up one of those and help us celebrate, uh, the incredible contributions of our community's older adults. Uh, the Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program is back. Uh, they will offer up to three thousand dollars in grants to help protect your home from earthquake damage. The program provides funding for seismic retrofits that strengthen older homes by bolting the foundation and bracing crippled walls to improve earthquake resistance. Additional assistance may be available for income-eligible homeowners with a household income less than ninety-eight thousand forty dollars. Uh, and registration is open till March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. So if you're interested in that, visit earthquakebracebolt.com, uh, or call eight seven seven two three two four three zero zero. And I'll tell you, as someone who's taken advantage of that program, it's, it's extremely simple, uh, and extremely beneficial. Uh, so if you don't have your foundation bolted, I encourage you to, uh, take a look at that. The Senior Center is offering a senior excursion to the Academy Museum of Motion Pictures on March twenty-seventh. Registration is twenty-four dollars, and you can sign up by calling six two six three five 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 two seven eight. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit more about storms. Uh, we've got, you know, a, a big storm coming in tomorrow, and we'll have a presentation about that. Uh, but what I'd like to, to, uh, announce here is that when an evacuation warning is issued, uh, that is your signal to prepare, to pack your essentials, secure your home, and have a plan for where you will go. If an evacuation order is issued, it is mandatory, and you must leave immediately. Uh, we cannot stress this enough, especially for mud flows. Ignoring an evacuation order puts not only yourself at risk, but also our first responders. Our officers and fire crews will not be able to assist you once conditions become too dangerous. Overnight parking is being enforced in all red flag zones. Uh, and, uh, and so we tell residents, do not park vehicles on the street in the identified impact zones, and we'll see those in Genesis in a minute. And this, the, this is important because it will allow emergency personnel to access, uh, to, uh, to access and mitigate hazards uh, that result from the storm. That is all of the announcements. Uh, now we will go on to the Public Code of Conduct, and normally there's one right up here. Ah, there it is. So, uh, if you want to come and speak here, uh, we've got yellow cards in the back. Uh, on the back room, it has the Public Code of Conduct. Uh, we've read it for the first couple of meetings here, so I assume most people know what it is. Uh, and with that, uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, there are two speaker cards submitted at this time. The first of the two is from, uh, management, Senior Management Analyst James Carlson.
Great. Senior Management Analyst Carlson.
Hello, good, uh, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I wanted to do a brief, uh, rundown on our anticipated storm coming up. Um, conditions, significant storm is expected, rainfall two to four inches total, with a peak intensity up to an inch an hour. As of two o'clock this afternoon, I was in a meeting with the county, and, uh, they shared some NWS, National Weather Service, information with us. And the big concern, and I want to make sure that our audience knows, is the early morning hours of Thursday. One AM, two AM, three PM, four PM. Um, the latest thing I saw was maybe up to a rate of two inches per hour. Um, that really exacerbates our situation and why evacuations are so important. Um, because it's the dead of the night, it's dark, people are home, they shouldn't be, but that's what we're worried about. Um, the county also indicated that we can expect a very similar storm to the one we had on February thirteenth. Um, and I think we recall that one. The Phase Two status that comes from the county is in effect at seven AM tomorrow. Um, to remind people, Phase Two impacts, you can expect moderate debris and mud flows, possible in more widespread areas. Some streets may be completely blocked, structures in high-risk areas may be endangered. Um, residents should be prepared for the possible evacuation with forecast of rain. Uh, that, that's the same with an evacuation warning. Uh, just to remind the council and everybody, we've done extensive measures to get ready for this. There's over five hundred feet of K-Rail installed, thousands of sandbags have been placed and distributed. Hundreds of thousands of cubic yards now have been removed from debris basins by the LA, by the county of LA. Uh, but even with these efforts, there are still anticipating mud flows into the streets in this upcoming storm. Uh, and real quick to touch the, the difference between a debris basin and a structural, um, device. Uh, a debris basin are engineered to capture debris and mud, preventing large flows from reaching homes or channels. Um, they are the large structures maintained by the county with, with roads to the rear of them for, for truckloads and everything like that. Rail and timber are debris structures, it's just like the one at Yucca Trail, and it's not a solid barrier. It is designed to allow mud to flow through in a controlled manner, slowing and filtering the debris. The, the intention is to capture the big stuff. I think I mentioned it before, the chocolate milk and smaller stuff will go through. Um, we, I will show you here the evacuation order and warnings. We have a combination that will go into effect tomorrow at seven AM. Uh, we're aligning ourselves with the county's mud forecast, so it starts at tomorrow at seven AM, and it is anticipated to expire Thursday at six PM, but that might change, but we are, we're modeling what they did. Um, I think the mayor just basically said it. Um, prepare immediately, we are not the, uh, Public Safety Division, Public, uh, Police Department, Fire Department, Ambulance, um, Public Works, Search and Rescue are not gonna run into an active debris flow. That's important for people to know. Um, we still have, um, the sandbags. We men, whoops, we mentioned the parking restrictions. I've been asked to let everybody know that overnight parking restrictions will be lifted for the entire town while this is in effect. We understand people may have to move their cars outside of evacuation order or warning zones. And so overnight parking on the street will be lifted. Uh, Athens Services will not be serving the canyon areas during the evacuation order, so Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, that's tough because that's their traditional day of the week. But we saw on, on February thirteenth how much trouble the cans can be, and how much additional damage they could pose. So there will not be trash tomorrow or Thursday in the canyon areas. Uh, these are evacuation order zones. Now remember, evacuation order is mandatory, um, and it really is the top of the town. Um, all the way from, this is gonna be, um, where the monastery is, all the way through. This is a particularly hot zone with Sierra Meadow all the way through. Uh, you may recall, there was some prediction of cross parcel drainage, so you'll see some creative or, or customized little zones down here to prevent that. Uh, we will be going up. This is our stonehouse area, we saw what happened there with, um, East Grandview. Um, and then the very top of this section, we have evacuation warnings in addition to our orders. So we're actually going a little bit lower with our evacuation information, and to, and it's, I, actually, we're hitting everything Grandview and up, either with an order or a warning. And part of the philosophy behind that is staff is working with the county and even the state at this point, and we're taking a look at some additional maps, and I'm sorry, this doesn't come through very well. These are dam inundation maps. These are kind of worst-case scenarios. There are only two maps in Sierra Madre, one is for Bailey Canyon, and I know it's hard to see, but if that fails, this is the path that we're looking at for more trouble.
Is that Sunnyside?
This is Lima.
Lima.
Yeah, but it, there is some interesting cross parcel drainage over here. Um, they also created a dam inundation map for the Sierra Madre Dam. Um, so we are looking at what we traditionally expect, but we're also expecting the possibility of it breaching the channel. And this is where they're showing us that the breach would likely occur, and how widespread that damage would be. So we go back to our maps, we are incorporating the Sierra Madre Dam inundation maps right here. And in co, in discussions, we still think Bailey's quite unlikely, but we're putting these people on a warning too. And that's the conclusion of my, uh, presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, where is our, do we have an evacuation, um, location for those who are evacuated?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So we, we have been in contact with the Red Cross, and the evacuation location is gonna be, uh, at the Sierra Madre Room, uh, adjacent to the YMCA. Yes.
How would you compare the level of sediment behind the catch basins after we've done this work compared to where we were before the last major storm?
Um, that's a, that's a great question, and it's another thing that we're in constant contact with the county. Um, and they warned me about just spraying figures at you. It's important to realize that the Sierra Madre Dam, going from a forty-five percent capacity to a fifty percent capacity, is much more important than the Lanin Debris Basin going from a five percent capacity to a hundred percent capacity. So a lot of the priority is based on the actual quantity of what's back there. Um, I base, they, I spoke to them today, they are confident with their capacities. I believe the Sierra Madre Dam is around, uh, uh, I gotta reverse it, sixty to sixty-five percent capacity, so it's, it's, they've been, um, they've taken over a hundred thousand, um, cubic yards out already. Um, Bailey's another one they're working hard on, Auburn's another one they're working hard on. Sturtevant, they have a lot of confidence in, Lanin, they have a lot of confidence in.
Can I follow up? So are you saying that, unless we have a, a knock on wood or simulated wood, um, uh, you're saying that we'd have to have a much larger quantity of rainfall relative to where we were last time before we'd have worse problems?
No, I actually, I'm afraid I wouldn't say that.
You wouldn't?
If, if we have about the same, um, then we might be looking at more overtopping of the dam.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did get some comments from residents this last, uh, week, just about the trucks and going across, and, and I just wanna let people know, I, there's a reason for this, you guys, there's a reason we're doing this, there's a reason we have to clear these basins, and I'm sorry, I know it's an inconvenience, and thank you for reporting if they've not been necessarily traveling safely, but I just want people to know that this is why you've had so many trucks traveling, so that we can all remain safe.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, and it's seeing them out there. Yeah, and it's seeing them out the front window. They do, you know, there's a lot of them, and they're there. It was yesterday morning, starting at, at 6:00 a.m., I saw the first truck come in, and I get to see, I've got to recognize some of them, and some of the same ones come by, I can see them, oh, it's his third trip. But it is really, really important. It's for our safety and the safety of all our residents, so, yeah, so we appreciate everybody's understanding about that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other comment cards?
Yes, sir, thank you. There's one more received from, and this one from Yvette Del Corazon.
Okay.
Okay, so I live in the Lower Canyon, and everyone seems to be skirting around the Yucca Trail Basin, and it is at capacity. I understand that since 2015, it has been turned over to the city, not to the county. I am very concerned. I have, since January 7th, I've been out of my house more than I've been in my house, and this is not being addressed. My other comment is on World Central Kitchen, and they have done such great work for our Foothill family, and now it has been shut off, and I'd like to know why, because I think a lot of people would benefit from it. I know I have, when I have been staying in Airbnbs, where they don't have kitchens and all that kind of stuff, it's been beneficial.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, and I live on Med Brookside in the Lower Canyon, and, yeah, I'd like, I've written, I've emailed, I've called, and I haven't had answers.
Great. We'll have staff talk with you, and we also have some information rolled to the Central Kitchen next on the agenda. So, thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, anything, any other comments?
We, at this time, we have no other speaker cards submitted, although there were several emails that were received by the City Clerk's office and forwarded to the City Council for items not on the, necessarily on the agenda, for discussion items, I should say, not on the agenda. And all through, all those emails were forwarded to the City Council and uploaded to the city's website for public inspection.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation, and it's a presentation to World Central Kitchen. So I think we've got two folks here from World Central Kitchen, and so if they could come up here. I'm going to go over to the left room over here, the people at home can hear. So on behalf of the city, I'd like to present a certificate of recognition to World Central Kitchen. And it says here, here's what it, what it looks like, and it says, "Whereas, World Central Kitchen has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to providing nourishing meals to communities impacted by disasters worldwide. And whereas the Palisades, Hearst, and Eaton wildfires have forced approximately 30,000 residents to evacuate from areas like Pacific Palisades, consuming nearly 4,000 acres and threatening over 13,000 structures. And whereas, more than 200,000 residents in the Los Angeles area have been affected by power outages, exacerbating the challenges faced by families and first responders. And whereas, the brave firefighters and emergency personnel continue to battle the blazes amid severe Santa Ana wind conditions, with gusts reaching up to 100 miles per hour. And whereas, World Central Kitchen has mobilized across Southern California to provide immediate relief and support to those in need, ensuring that families and first responders receive comforting and nourishing meals. And whereas, through collaboration with local restaurant and food truck partners, World Central Kitchen has served more than 200,000 meals to those affected by, by these devastating fires. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council recognizes and honors World Central Kitchen for its compassionate service and dedication to providing hope and nourishment in times of crisis. We extend our deepest gratitude for World, to the World Central Kitchen Relief Team, volunteers, and partners for their extraordinary humanitarian efforts in Southern California." Presented this 11th day of March 2025 by the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre, Mayor Robert Parkers, Mayor Protem Christine Lowe, Councilmember Edward Garcia, Councilmember Gene Goss, and Councilmember Kelly Creep. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Trish Engel. I run community outreach for World Central Kitchen. This is my colleague Wayne Chiang, and I, yeah, we are very grateful to be here. We are grateful to the city of Santa, I mean, sorry, Santa Monica, it's just in Santa Monica, too. We're all over the place. Sierra Madre, I'm also a local myself, and, yeah, just wanted to say a couple of words to you. So founded in 2010 by Chef Jose Andres, World Central Kitchen is first to the front lines providing fresh meals in response to humanitarian climate and community crises. So, as I said, on behalf of the organization, thank you so much to the city of Sierra Madre for your support during this time. You have given us many volunteers at our distribution sites, and those volunteers have traveled across LA to not only support us with the hot meal distributions, there's also farmers markets, and have just been just incredible stewards for the community. It's been incredible to witness the community collective effort during this time, and I've never been more proud to be from this area. And I just would love to let you know that we have served over 440 million meals around the world, but 1.3 million meals in LA alone for these wildfire response. And in the city of Sierra Madre, we have served 100, over 140,000 meals just here alone, and distributed 7,000, or almost 8,000 gallons of water, potable water, in this area. So yes, thank you so much for allowing us to be here, for supporting us, and we will be, while we're not in Sierra Madre at this time, we are doing targeted drops. We're doing farmers markets in Altadena, and then on the west side, in Malibu and Santa Monica, and we are here, we will be here, as long as the need is here, and, yeah, thank you.
Where are the targeted drops?
Targeted drops right now are at various hotels that people are in. When we are notified of vulnerable communities, we make sure that we partner with specific restaurants to do those drops to those areas, whether it be like elderly homes, community events, right? We, we get emails from members of the community, from sports teams, from anybody asking to support distributions that communities are putting on, or, yeah, all sorts of events. So we are here, we are listening, we're also prepared for these floods that are coming, hopefully not, but we're prepared and we will be there, so, thank you.
City Manager Reynoso, if we need to, because of the floods, do we have a location identified for World Central Kitchen to, to be located?
The location, whether we're at the city yard poses a little bit of a challenge for us, in that that's where our public works crews and emergency equipment has access to the city yard. Currently, the city doesn't have another city facility where, where we can, where we can host the, the World Central Kitchen, but we could work with some of our community groups and churches to see if they have availability.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, if there is a spot that we can, especially as, as these storms come up, or if we can get the information out about where those targeted drops may be, or if there's any needs, some local, some localized places, I think that would be helpful to our residents. Great, all right. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. We have six items on the consent agenda. City Clerk Aguilar, would you please read the consent items by title only?
Yes, thank you. There are, as you mentioned, six items, and the first of the six are, is Consent A, Consideration of Resolution 25-18, Approving Certain Demands. Staff's recommendation is that the City Council approve Resolution 25-18. Consent Item B is the consideration of the 14th tolling agreement with Ginkgo Stonehouse LLC. Again, staff's recommendation is that the City Council adopt the tolling agreement, the 14th tolling agreement with Ginkgo Stonehouse LLC. Consent Item C is a request for proposal for professional auditing services for fiscal years 25, 2025, 26, 2026, 27, and 2027, 28, and it is staff's recommendation that the City Council authorize the issuance of a RFP for professional auditing services. Consent Item D is the consideration of support for California's federal supplemental appropriations request. The recommendation is that the City Council approve a letter of supporting, of support for California's request for federal supplemental appropriations to assist in disaster recovery. Consent Item E is the approval of a memorandum of understanding with the County of Los Angeles for administration of the right of way, excuse me, right of entry program required for Phase Two of private property debris removal program, and it is recommended that the City Council execute the MOU for the right of entry program for Phase Two private property debris removal. And lastly, Consent Item F is the notification of emergency public works contract for the floral debris basin cleanout by Northwest Escavating, Inc. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council receive and file the notification of an emergency public works contract for emergency debris removal. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any questions on Item A? Item B? Item C? Item D? Item E?
I have one quick question. If we weren't to approve this, what would, what would, what would happen? I mean, isn't, isn't it up to the private property, but like if the city didn't put this through?
If we were not to make this memorandum of understanding with the county for the administration of Phase Two, we would have to do it entirely with our own staff, and it's, it's, it's quite a bit of work coordinating with the Army Corps of Engineers and a number of other things. It really is in our best interest to, to work with the county on that.
Great, thank you so much.
I have a follow-up, a question on that.
Yes, please.
So is the, the fact of this an indication that progress is being made on that phase? I know we got some public comment via email about concerns around the length of time it's taking for this Phase Two to, to commence, and so is this, is this indication that things are maybe, maybe picking up in terms of, of completion or starting Phase Two?
I would, I would hate to say that it is an indication that things will speed up, but it, it does remove a hindrance or a potential block, you know? I think I mentioned before that during our task force meetings, it really does appear that the Army Corps of Engineer is concentrating relatively center of Altadena and moving towards the, towards the boundaries. So that kind of makes Sierra Madre look a little bit towards the end of the work.
And is Phase One complete?
Phase One is complete. There were, however, some areas or some properties where the EPA was unable to complete Phase One. It could be, in fact, the one in Sierra Madre, where the structure itself was not safe for them to go in and remove household hazardous waste. So they moved that to the Phase Two, and they're going to let the Army Corps do it all together with their, with their major demo.
Could you remind our public then what Phase One was removing versus Phase Two?
Yeah, Phase One is essentially household hazardous waste. There was already some review on, right after the fire, for what we call extraordinary hazardous waste, and that could be stuff like nuclear, explosive, methamphetamine, that kind of stuff. So the EPA went and got what you would consider traditional household hazardous waste as soon as that initial review was done. And then the Army Corps of Engineer, if you opt in, will do the major demolition, including the removal of soils and hazardous trees. And fortunately, we've been paying attention to the county's task force with a lot of the discussion about trees, and I really think they have a great idea in just allowing the private property owner to sign a waiver if they don't want their tree out, and I think that's as simple and perfect as it can be.
Did all of our residents opt in, do we know?
No, there are, one opted out early, and I'm aware of another, two parcels that are probably going to opt out. So those are the ones that the city has to administer, but we have existing demolition ordinances and stuff like that to lean on. We also watch and see what Pasadena does. We've developed a relationship with them to see how they're managing the opt-outs.
Thank you so much.
Are there any, have you been able to get in touch with all of the property owners of the structures that have been impacted, of the properties that have been impacted?
From what I understand, from what I recall at last week's planning commission meeting, we have been in contact with all red flags, so those are pretty much complete destruction. There are some yellow flags when you're talking about partial, that Director Lynn indicated they're still having a little difficulty getting everybody contact, contacted.
Any further questions? All right, Consent Item F.
May I ask, where, where is the floral debris basin? I tried to find out.
The floral debris basin is the only city-owned debris basin in the city of Sierra Madre. It's directly north of Sierra Meadow.
Oh, okay.
And in fact, there is a spillway. If you get to the very top of the cul-de-sac, there's a house to the east, a house to the west, and a spillway is right in between them. And then it, and then it goes under the street.
All right. Now, I'd like to open this up for public comment for any of the consent items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards for the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we do not have any comment cards received.
Great, then I'll bring it back to council. Any discussion on any of the six items? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. That takes us to the end of our agenda, and we'll open it up for future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items? Yes?
Based on public comment tonight, as well as, I think, updates that we've gotten, it would be good to have an update on the city's efforts with respect to the Yucca Trail. I don't know, what are we calling it? Retention?
Structure.
Retention, structure.
Excellent, all right. Anything else? If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until March 25th.
So moved.
And it's, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.